Select Board to order. Jeff.
Yeah.
Brian.
Here.
Kathy here. And it's here is John.
John is here.
And the subject of this, not having any public comment. We're not having any chairman's comment. Thank you, Debbie. And it's to talk about the process of the having initiative search. I guess, would you start and tell us where we are sort of?
Sure. John Petrie, Community Paradigm. And appreciate the town you hired us to assist with the process and worked with your nine-member screening committee. So we basically published the information. We put together a position statement. We got it out there. We recruited for position. We had seventeen applicants apply for a position. Once that was done, we provided to the screening committee all seventeen applicants. They met, they chose the people they wished to interview. So basically, six people were invited for a screening round interview. After that screening round, the committee voted unanimously to send forward three candidates as finalists. So you receive those three candidates today. And so they are in a public, you know, at this point, so John Apple, Tony Bottalata, and Joe Cahill, your three finalists for the position as submitted by the screening committee. So again, that was a vote of the screening committee. Our process was to assist, you know, with the process, to assist through the interviews. I was present for the interviews. And the way they set it up is they had me ask the questions. Committee members were set up to if they wanted follow-up questions at any point, which they did from time to time, ask questions. So we held the one-hour interviews. And so the screening committee then followed those three finalists to the board. That's where it stands today. We have three finalists. We've set up for interviews for basically Thursday, April 30. So we have interviews set up. And what's been set up through the request, I think from the board to Greg, which we, you know, set up is that the candidates will come in an hour early prior to the interview with the board, meet with department heads, and have a chat with department heads, then come in for a formal interview with the board. For, we've set up an hour and fifteen minutes. Basically, an hour for the interview, give you a few minutes in between the interviews. So we have a four o'clock with interview, five fifteen and six thirty. And then basically, you set up the following Monday for decisions. So you'll have your interviews, you'll have time to think about those interviews, and come back for your discussion on the following Monday to make your selection. So that's the process as it's been set up, and that's where we are today in this process.
Anyone? Is it the moment? Oh, my question is, would we be violating the process if after we had interviewed these candidates, we talked to the selection committee?
So the selection committee, you can talk to, if the members of the selection committee wish to talk to you, but the, the, the interviews were confidential. So, and they're not allowed to discuss any of the other candidates, you know, with you. Only, only the three names that are finalists will never be released. The others will never be released, you know, publicly per general law. So typically, selection committees are never, you know, their interviews was their interview. Your interview is your process. So typically, that's not the case. I'm not aware of where selection committees will come in because, in essence, they really can't discuss.
So it's actually a screening committee though?
It's a screening committee, I'm sorry, you're not a selection committee, uh, the screening committee. And so their process was to represent, they did not rate the candidates. There weren't a, you know, one, two, and three. What they did ask is that, they, they did have a discussion afterwards and asked that I put some questions around certain areas to make sure they're included, which you received. So those questions were sent to you on suggested questions. Many of those were based on what we, you know, we provide all boards. And, but I also made sure I covered the areas as requested by the screening committee.
I'm, I'm not, not, did not mean to ask that we bring in the screening committee.
Sure.
But that as individuals with connections with the screening committee, would it be improper for us to approach them?
I always say to screening committee members that if they wish to speak to an individual member of the board, that's their prerogative. I don't control that. So if you have, you know, wish to have an individual conversation, I guess that's an individual conversation.
Okay.
Just don't turn it into a serial conversation, you know, you know, for a violation.
No, we're not going to, oh, open meeting hall, yeah.
Yeah, as long as we follow that, and that's your prerogative. It's, it's not for me to say to you how to, how you're going to conduct your process.
My, so your question was, would it violate the process to talk to screening committee members after the interview?
After the interview?
Yeah, because I, I personally feel very strongly that none of us should talk to anybody in the screening committee about any candidates. You only get one chance to make a good first impression, right? And give those candidates the opportunity to make their first impression. Yes. And I don't intend to personally talk to any member of the screening committee about specific candidates. Because we asked them to do a very specific job, which was to filter and screen. And I think, as long as the question, what I would ask, so John and I are meeting with you on Friday.
Yes.
To go over a list of questions Debbie's helping us compile along. I would appreciate understanding if, I guess, if we suggested deleting a question, but the screening committee wanted us to ask that question, would you interrupt?
I like, sure.
Make sure we didn't delete something.
Sure, that they, they weren't pushing?
Yeah.
Yes, I, I, I have that, and I can let you know.
I think that's all right.
And, and it was more, you know, generalities of making sure we had finances and, you know, but I could certainly, when we have the discussion, let you know whether that's just a, a generic question or whether that was a posed question, you know, coming from your screening committee, yes.
Okay. And with regard to all the questions in general, I assume there are points that need to be made at a question, and there are the right way to make that point and perhaps the wrong way to make that point based upon how a, a question should be phrased so that nobody here gets in trouble.
Correct.
And you'll provide us a copy that says, this is the way the question should be asked. And maybe all the ones you get will be fine, I don't know. But if you say, hey, this is bordering on something, you probably shouldn't ask it this way if you want some information along those lines. And I think all of us are smart enough, there are certain questions you're just not asking. But there are still ones, with the exception of Brian perhaps, but there are.
I'm not going to waste my time.
Jeff, just as a general comment, some of the feedback that I gave on the questions was, I, I felt some of the questions were a little bit leading for the candidates. And, and I, I want to make sure, so I, I kind of tempered some of the introductory comments. And we can talk more about that on Friday. But I, I personally like to give the candidate an opportunity to say what's, say what's on your mind before I put a thought in your mind, you know what I'm saying?
Okay.
So just, that's just a personal preference.
Question, so at this point, the screening committee is done. They've done their job.
That's correct. So basically.
Well, resolved, if you want to say, but yeah.
Yes, if I remember right, they gave the chair the authorization to approve the minutes, you know, of the committee, you know, you know, for the final minutes to be submitted to town clerk. And they're done. So they don't need to get together again unless the, you know, select board gives them additional direction.
Okay.
Okay, good. The other reason we're here is that there was a, a local candidate who was not one of the three selected. And it has been suggested that we interview Mr. Dan. Each of us, starting with you.
Fine. Okay. This is a question, so in the committee, you interviewed, the committee interviewed six people?
They invited six, one withdrew prior to the interview, so they interviewed five.
Okay, fine. And these are the top three, the other two are, for lack of another term, runners-up.
They weren't selected.
They were not selected. Okay, that's, that's fine. We all know Chuck fairly well, and I guess he has, you know, career development plans and so many, so many town department heads do to maybe take the next step. We don't know anything about his interview with the committee, nor should we, as certainly at this point. We just know he was a candidate and was not among the top.
If, but if I can just clarify, I can't, I will not recognize whether, you know, he was a, you know, whether he applied or not. So the information I'm receiving is outside of, you know, from me or the selection, the screening committee.
Okay, all right, fine.
Okay, so if we're going to have, we should probably have at least a QV.
Excuse me.
A, a, a resume.
A resume, yes.
So you obviously had it, but you can't confirm it?
No, that's correct.
Okay, got it.
Okay, that's fine, okay. Well, we're privy to, you know, what goes on in Town Hall somewhat.
Sure.
Obviously. And Chuck has a lot of support, you know, from, from a lot of his colleagues that perhaps he should be considered where he ranks with all those people is not so much a relevant issue here, at, at least at this point. But that he should be given an opportunity to chat with us and perhaps go through the process. I don't know where he'll land up on all of that. We know his background. But is that something that is kind of precedent-setting in terms of your experience in going through the recruiting process?
So let me state, the appointment process is your process.
That's right.
All right, so there's no, my understanding is no bylaw, there's no charter provision, you know, that states that in, in some charter, in some bylaws, there's a provision, you know, that the select board can only interview those people presented by a screening committee. My understanding, that's not the case here. So the bottom line is, this is your selection process. If you wish to, you know, change the process, you know, you may do so. So if you're looking to do that, that's your choice. Hasn't been done in the past, yes. You know, so, you know, I, I can think of, you know, at least two or three communities out there that altered the process, you know, and, you know, made changes to it based on what the select board, you know, wanted to do. That's your prerogative, this is your appointment. So I'm here to put forward what was directed to me as the consultant through the screening committee. You know, and so the only thing I can discuss is the three candidates that are before you for interview for next week. I can't discuss any other candidates, but if you wish to change the process, that's within your prerogative.
I mean, really, the key thing was, have you seen that happen before? And you're saying, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
So, you know, the reason for developing a process before you discuss names is to make sure it's fair and make sure that favoritism doesn't creep in. So I am concerned about cherry-picking any individuals and overriding the recommendations of a very honorable and, you know, selection committee. These are not amateurs that we put on that selection committee. So my, my only desire from the very beginning is to make sure we have a fair and transparent process. And internal candidates, they have a natural leg up, you know, advantage because they know the town, because they know the people. I think to, to, to pull someone forward would somehow say that the selection committee was not fair in their assessment, and I don't agree with that at all. He, you know, any internal candidate had the same fair shot as anybody else during the interview process. I, I just think it's, it's not a good precedent to pluck people. I think it shows favoritism, I'll just say that. And I trust the results of the selection committee, the screening committee. I, I don't have any evidence in front of me that says it wasn't fair and partial and that everybody didn't have the same shot. So I just, we have three people to interview, I, I, I don't have a, whoever that is, you know. Brian?
Just, I disagree with his asking reasons. I think that knowing the town, knowing town employees, town staff, department heads, board members, as well as the general public, should be weighed into this. If that's intangible, it doesn't show up on a resume. I mean, someone in town, I'm talking about any, I mean, the end department head. It also sends the wrong message to anyone here in town that if you want advancement, loyalty is, is no longer advantageous long-term, doing a good job of what you do. I think that should be weighed, I think that should be considered. And I just don't like the look that it gives. This now becomes, this becomes a, a stopping point for anyone. There's no, there's no room for internal growth. What's, what's going to?
Can I address that? Because I, I completely support just that one point. No, but I think we're all disappointed, the fact that no internal candidate came forward to the final, to the finalist list. To be honest with you guys, that's a failure of us, okay? We, and Greg, I'm including you in that comment. We, we have no clear succession planning process that involves, you know, employee development. The right way to fix this problem, in my experience, is to get serious about succession planning and developing employees so that when these opportunities come up, they're ready. And shame on us, that didn't happen in this case. I, I, I feel strongly, we did not do a good job as a board and town administrator.
Fix that. Okay, I'm not looking, I'm not advocating for the position for him. I'm advocating that an internal candidate who has the resume or the, the experience that this individual has should be considered. I want to, I want to talk to him, okay? Yes, the, the, the selection committee talked, the screening committee talked to him. I want that same opportunity. And I think, I think that any internal candidate deserves that opportunity. I mean, we, we, the heck with the, the, the chart, the opposition chart. We all, we all work together on this, okay? And we have to support each other, or else we're just going to stagnate. I truly believe that, and then if you want to talk about the individual, what we have coming forward in the next ten years, this gentleman was the architect for this infrastructure work. I mean, he can hit the ground running, all right? And again, and Kathy, you and I sat on, on the, the interview for the fire chief. Okay, we weren't, I mean, Greg, I made this election. I went in there, there was two, two candidates, so I was an internal candidate and was on, I was outside. I was leaning towards the internal candidate for the exact same reasons. But the fire chief, the fire chief blew my away. I wanted someone to blow me away. Okay, and I opened that up, off of that, that.
I, I think you're getting into advocacy.
Well, no.
Selection as opposed to.
No, but I'm just, but the point here is that I think that we owe it to ourselves and we owe it to the employees of this town. And, oh, by the way, this gentleman has the respect of the constituency out there. So that's my point. And I, I don't think it hurts to talk about that.
Yep.
I agree with a lot of what Brian has to say. But my, my main concern is that there's a possibility we're going to have two people in the end. And I have to ask, why don't we pick alternates?
The screening committee had the discussion, and they chose not to. So there was no clear direction. I mean, the screening committee was asked to bring finalists, you know, to the board, and that's the decision the screening committee made. You know, so they, they felt that three, you know, candidates, the discussion of alternates is always raised, you know, during these sessions. I just want to point that out. But this, this was the decision screening committee made, was to send these three finalists to the select board.
Can you tell us whether the other finalists are also candidates elsewhere in our community?
My knowledge, one of the three finalists that you're going to be dealing with has, she's been appointed in Danvers but has not come to an agreement.
Right.
And so that is on the table, but she is still a candidate here in Manchester by the Sea.
Okay, I'm, I'm curious, I mean, that is, that, that's public knowledge.
That's public knowledge.
Yeah, and, but for the others, I, we don't know.
I'm not aware of the others.
Okay.
There's not a lot going on right now. I mean, you and Danvers were.
There's always stuff going on.
In this, in this area, spoils and what's going on there. Yeah, no, they, they actually hired somebody again.
Okay.
But anyways, for this area, you know, the two openings right now, you know, were Danvers and Manchester by the Sea. And you know the results of Danvers, and, you know, and you're here. Everything else that's going on in the state is probably a little further out, which would probably require moves, and I'm not aware that these candidates are, you know, anyplace else at this point. Sometimes we are, but.
If I recall, our discussion on the original process is, we asked, you know, for two, but were encouraged to ask for three in case somebody, you know, dropped out or whatever. So we'd at least have the two, right? To me, the process is working business-wise.
I personally would like to see at least three. That's my thought. But to Kathy, to your point about succession train, succession down the road, maybe this is part of that. If you allow a candidate to come in and interview, it's, it's only going to, you can see who they are, they can see who they are, and build themselves, maybe, I'm not saying today is their day, I'm not saying.
I understand. And experience, you know, interviewing is definitely an experiential learning opportunity, right? My problem is cherry-picking someone over the recommendation of the screening committee. If we really want a fourth, because we're going to conduct, as it stands right now, we're going to conduct three interviews next Thursday. If we want to conduct a fourth interview, okay? My thought is you go back to the screening committee and ask them, of the remaining candidates, is there someone that we should look at? My, my concern, you know, if I'm sitting on that screening committee, I'm wondering what we're talking about here. I, I just think there's a, I don't know if you call it professional courtesy, respect for what they did. I, I personally feel that there are lots of ways to develop internal candidates.
Without having practice interviews?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, but I, well, hang on, so screening committee conducted interviews, okay? This candidate, the internal candidate, made it through the first round because their resume went in and they made the first cut. The screening committee dropped them in for an interview, correct? So it's the second cut. Anybody who applied, and I'm, maybe there was more than one internal candidate, I don't know, but someone came in for an interview. So I believe, I believe that.
Okay, do we know that in fact one, one internal candidate was interviewed?
Or we can't know that? So I would, I would, that's an awkward, he may know. Someone here may know information that you've been.
Officially, no one will be able to tell you the answer to that officially. What you've heard behind the scenes is, you know, is what you hear. But officially, I will never confirm nor deny, and neither can the screening committee confirm or deny, you know.
But someone who knows the individual may have been told.
Well, well, I, I, I will say, I, I received a letter from staff members here in Town Hall indicating that we should, encouraging us to interview Chuck Dan.
Yes. But they say that he in fact made the cut from seventeen to the six. Yeah, and I don't remember.
I don't see it. I just. The wording is just the opportunity to participate in the final interview.
That's all, that's all, I believe that's all we're trying to do at this point.
So, why?
I'm not advocating for the, the candidate himself. I, I've read, I've seen the resumes of the three, okay, impressive resumes. But I think that we take care of them.
Yeah.
And I think that at this point, and I think that an internal candidate knows that, that there's no advocacy for him, for the job, for the position, just the opportunity. And I, I think that for another hour and fifteen minutes of our time on Thursday, it's an investment worth making.
The other point that I would make is, internal candidates don't necessarily have an advantage. They may be if they're, say, the assistant town manager. I don't think that will ever happen here. But they're coming in, they're coming in knowing a lot about one particular aspect of managing the town and maybe not very much about anything else. That is a tough hill to climb. If you look at the questions that you provided us, and if I'm coming from just one particular area and I get asked stuff on other stuff, that's hard. It's really hard, and I, and, you know, I think some of us, and I, I did watch the interview in Danvers, which was public.
Yeah.
And you, you got to be on your feet. You have a general idea, but once the questions start coming, you got to start reaching in the back of your head, all right, I've been at this for fifteen years, this is my response. And you can't jump from housing to planning to budget to conservation to schools, to one after another and say, oh, this is what I think. You can't, unless you've done it.
Right.
So somebody in, 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 that has worked in just one or even two areas, that's a challenge. And that's why the, the, the people that you provided, all three of them, have general administrative experience.
And that's why we need to get serious about succession planning. And when this is all over, honestly, can we put out our actual list? Have the HR person come in here and let, and let's get serious.
Well, I don't, I don't know if this town ever warrants, somebody that would be in a strong position is an assistant town manager. And I don't think this town ever is going to.
Debbie, could you make a note?
Just make a note, just make a note.
At some point.
At some point.
Say July, succession.
No, and I would, and I would also say this, is that at some point, every one of these candidates started somewhere, right?
No, they didn't.
Absolutely.
Okay. And I think that the candidates I looked at, they, this is either their, most of them was the first job. That would probably, is a, versus second. So I think that, but I want to be able to advocate for any other department head who wants the opportunity, okay, be it the police chief, fire chief, it could be Cheryl Marshall, okay? If, I, I think that they deserve an opportunity to talk to us.
What would we tell, what would you tell the screening committee?
That the select board, on further discussion, wants to open up for further, you know, they, they, they were, they were appointed at the, they served at the, the pleasure of this board, okay? And this board thanks them for their service. And however, we'd like to look at one more candidate. So I don't think it's disingenuous at all.
Or itself, yeah.
Or itself, you know.
I don't think, we have a timing problem.
Okay, yeah, and if all of a sudden.
If a candidate who is already kind of, is working out an arrangement at Danvers, had accepted that today, I think our conversation might be going a little.
Yeah, I think it would be totally.
Absolutely, because we may, we'd be working with two, and if you're going to add a third one, you can't say on April 2nd, oh, she's decided she's got a contract. April 2nd, you got an interview April 3rd, that's hard.
Right.
You just can't do that.
So.
I don't, I don't think it's hurting us to look at another candidate.
But the, the, an alternative is to go back to the selection committee and say that.
Screening, screening, I'm sorry, screening committee, and say, look, we are appearing to be about down to two, down to two.
Yeah. What is your next recommendation? Now, that solves the problem of having only two. And it follows the process.
I can tell you, the screening committee had the discussion. And this was the decision of the screening committee to move forward to three. And, you know, there was a discussion, a vote, and I had to add an alternate.
Okay.
So that would be the answer, you know, back to the screening committee. So you can slow the process. So you can slow the process down, you know, and, you know, try to get the screening committee back. But that was, I can tell you, you know, that was the discussion, that was the answer, you know, from the screening committee. The decision they made was thought out, it was, you know, you know, discussed. And the screening committee knew exactly, you know, you know, the ramifications of, you know, they have a vote of moving three forward. So that was the vote you followed, you know, so now I can, I can say.
So, so our conclusion is, is the screening said, the screening committee said, you've got three people here and if one drops out, tough luck you're down to two. They did not, they said, they considered the alternate, I don't know what the discussion was there, pluses and minuses, but they said, no, we don't want an alternate.
That's, that's, I, that's more like it, yes. There was, you know, they did not wish to add an alternate to the mix.
But they, but they were certainly aware that, well, you've probably told them three could go down to two, at that time you didn't.
They were fully aware and they were fully aware of the situation. I mean, Danvers hadn't been selected at the time. You know, but they were aware of where, you know, the, these, all the candidates were at that point, you know, and the situation.
I wonder why they thought that.
They have this discussion with the doctor. I just don't need this luxury, the screening committee to help make this decision.
Okay, now I have another decision. We have someone with a hand up. It had not been my intention to take comment, outside comments.
If it's necessary.
Okay.
This is ours.
Fine, so. Anyone else, anyone have anything new or different?
Yes, the, the question you asked earlier is, do we believe this internal candidate already interviewed? Because I, I agree that interviewing is part of development. I can't imagine a scenario where an internal candidate wasn't already interviewed. I guess I'm and I just, based on the, the staff memo that we got, why would we have received that memo if they were not interviewed and you know, didn't just quite make the, the next selection? So my, my belief is that they were interviewed and the screening committee, you know, moved forward with other candidates. That is my belief based on the evidence in front of me.
That would be my suspicion too.
It's just, the next set of interview, the next interviews are public. And I just think, you know, that they require break here. I'm concerned about that too.
I'm slightly concerned that we have less information, which, yes, we all know what's what Chuck Dan has been doing for the past six years. But I would like to see a resume. I, you've already said that for internal candidates, you don't do background checks because it's inconvenient, it's awkward.
It's awkward. We don't do background checks on internal candidates because it puts too many people in an awkward position. So because the person, they would have to submit professional references. And professional references would be potentially some of you or department heads, and how do you address? So we refuse to do, if you don't know your internal candidates, that's another situation, is the way we put it. So you, you know them better than we can ever do in getting a reference check put together. So we do not do, that's policy we have, because it won't work because it just puts everybody in an awkward position. If he asks a fellow, you know, you know, department head, she asks a fellow department head in any situation, or asks the town administrator, you know, would you give me a reference? That puts everybody in a bad situation because no one's going to be honest in the discussion with us.
And do we know if any other candidates applied with a resume? I mean, that's a bit of a concern. I, at one point, I thought we had more than one person, Greg's succession plan. I don't know where that stands. If we, if we were to cherry pick and pull one forward and somebody else on the staff applied, this is not making me feel, I'm not going to be honest.
I did answer that.
But Andy, you make a good point. Sitting here with personal relationships, chuckle. That's all we got, it's a lot, but there should be, there should be some sort of a cover letter.
I think we'll write a C.
C D, pardon me?
We want to see this, this, the same resume.
Yeah.
Cover letter for the three, it's going to, I think we owe it to ourselves to see it.
Yes, that's.
And again, you know my feelings, I think we owe it to ourselves to, to, for an hour and a half of our time and see what, yeah. It could be a time well invested.
Not even just for, for him and us.
Right. Absolutely.
That's nice.
Absolutely.
So why not open it up to all of Greg's direct reports? Why are we centering on just this one person? Again, fairness, opportunity for everybody, but we should, are we sure no one else applied? I just.
I'm pretty confident, I guess, based on conversations I've had throughout town hall. I would say that without knowing, I could speculate and make an educated guess. There's only one individual that's looking to make that kind of jump in your career.
You're nodding, is that communication or?
You, you tell me what you would like. Although we're setting our bounds, I'm not part of this process officially. So it's your process. We want definitive answers to those questions, so I, I intend to know.
Do you want?
Look, it's, it's your call.
Okay.
I mean, we're having this conversation, I'd like to hear.
I think, again, nothing but, nothing gained.
Yeah.
So were there, were there, was there more than one internal candidate who applied? Okay. Does that make you?
But that, but there was an internal candidate who applied. Okay. And you can't say whether or not they were actually interviewed.
I, I do know the answer to that.
Without violating the.
But because the person shared that with me directly.
Okay.
So I'm not violating the trust of the.
The screening.
Screening.
Yes, okay.
Okay. Was the person interviewed?
Okay, thank you. Um, did they, in your conversation with that person, are you able to let us know what, what they learned from the process? Did they learn from the process? Is there something else they expect to learn from us? What, what, what is, what is the benefit to them to come forward? I guess that us cherry picking some of it forward.
He shared that he would does feel like he could learn something from the conversation with all of you, it's a different level. You're the, you're the elected officials. I thought that would be valuable. That it would be an opportunity for him to learn from all of you. And he would enjoy the opportunity to share some of his perspectives.
That's good. I'm good with that answer.
Kathy, you've been concerned about cherry picking.
Yeah.
There's only one cherry.
Not necessarily, there was somebody, there were two cherries. There, there was an outside candidate who also was not brought forward.
Right.
And our job is to select the best town administrator we can, with all the candidates.
Okay.
But also.
Sorry, I, I understood you'd be cherry picking among, but that's not true yet.
No, I, and my other concern is you know, just you, you have somebody here. If I was that other candidate, we didn't get four, you know, selected as a finalist. And we cherry picked, you know, somebody to come forward, what is, I wouldn't be too happy if I was that other person. It's unfair to that other person. Are we going to interview all five people that the selection committee interviewed? I, I just, I don't know, you know. Maybe that other person also has, you know, experience that we'd like to know and it, it just feels like we are cherry picking someone in an HR process.
It's really, it's not, I think that it's that, you know.
There's somebody else who didn't make the cut.
Exactly, but we also, I think we owe it to town staff. Okay, as stewards for this town. Okay, and to maintain the, the, everyone in Town Hall should have, should feel comfortable that they have an opportunity to move up.
Yeah.
Okay, and I believe that that also includes an opportunity to sit with the select board and discuss what they know, how they feel the town should go. It's calling an interim manager, whatever you want to go. As far as baseball or any other, okay. They've sat at the right hand of the town administrator for six years. And I want to know what he's learned.
Okay, I'm, I think I again, is there anyone who has anything, you know, Kathy, do you think you have any heart? Okay. So I would look for motion.
One of, but we want to get his, his paperwork.
I don't think I.
I think we need to make a decision. We need to look at his paperwork before we talk to him. But I think there's not much that his paperwork is going to tell us
that we don't already.
That we don't already know.
Exactly.
To see the, I'm, I'm interested in the cover letter, to be honest.
I, I'm going to make a motion that we include Charles Dan in the final round of the interviews for the select board on Thursday, April third, two thousand twenty-five.
That's what I mean.
Okay.
One modification, pending receipt of his application. Pending his, 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 his letter of application.
Okay, I'm sure that's somewhere in file or something.
We're going to squeeze him into April third? And I'm, I'm away for the weekend, I'm leaving the next morning. And we'll be back till the following Monday, so we're going to interview this person. If the board says yes to this, are we going to interview him on the same day?
Well, let's see, that'd be seven thirty, we even started seven thirty. Someone would start at seven thirty.
I can, for this, I didn't be willing to, I don't know what time can you get out of work? You can hear what we're living for? Because we're the only two that really mess up.
Yeah, I'm going to be cutting it close even at four.
Going.
No, it's like any other.
We occasionally go after nine and we're not very nice at that point, but.
And who, who makes the decision as to who's at the seven thirty ward not?
We're planning, we're planning for four, but it may be three.
Right, that's true too.
You know, so.
That's very true.
You have to put that plan together, but it's a long time on.
Yes, we're here until ten o'clock last week.
So.
Ten twenty.
Somebody put the names in a hat and choose the dates, choose the order.
Right, is that how we normally have?
Well, I always handle that.
All right, that's fine.
Come up with.
Yeah, so usually I'll first, so you got A, B, C, D here, coincidentally, so.
Makes it easy.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, starting for the discussion. Jeff.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Kathy. Kathy says no.
John says yes.
Okay, bye. Thank you very much.
All right, I'll take a big time to write it for.
Yes, I love to try.
Oh, circuit.
Jeff. Brian. Kathy.
Yes, yes.
There's just a time for you.
All right.
Chris, get your own.